Hey.
Good morning and welcome to Tuesday, October 11th, 2022 Board of Supervisors. At this time, we call the order for closed session. If the clerk could please read out the closed session agenda items.
Closed session agenda for today, October 11th, 2022. Item one, pursuant to government code, section 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel, re-existing litigation, Calaveras Planning Coalition versus Calaveras County Board of Supervisors at all, Calaveras County Superior Court case number 19CV44471. Item two, pursuant to government code, 54957.6, conference with county-designated labor negotiators Nick Marvin and Corey Allen regarding the following employee organization, Service Employees International Union SEIU Local 2015. Item three, pursuant to government code, 54956.9D2, conference with legal counsel, re-anticipating litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation.
With that, is there any public comment related to the closed session agenda items?
There is no online public comment.
Okay, and I'm not seeing any in the room with that.
Oh.
Okay.
Hello. Good morning. I'm here for all the providers for IHSS. We need a, we need a contract and we need to be a little bit generous because the gas is driving us nuts. I am a provider, I take care of, my name is Lupi Smith. I take care of my husband, my dad, and my son. My son's special ed, my dad's got dementia, and my husband's dying of cancer. And we're barely making it. Sometime we go to the grocery store, we barely have enough. The way the gas is going up is crazy. Another thing, we need more providers in this county. There's so many people who are getting ill. We're getting in the age of, we really need providers, you know? I can say for myself, I'm not that young, and there's hardly no providers around here. There's many, many people who want to be providers. We just need to establish those providers, more of them around here, because we're all going to need one. And I really thank you, I'm humbly just asking you guys to please be generous with the contract, we really need it. Thank you, you have a nice day, okay?
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on the closed session agenda items?
Okay.
Seeing none in the room, none online, correct?
Correct, no, no, not online.
We will convene into closed session and be back at 9 o'clock.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for everyone's patience. Next, we have our regular agenda item number 23, and I will have the clerk read out, please.
Item number 23 is an action item from Public Works. Number one, introduce amendments to the county's storm water quality ordinance. Number two, waive the first reading of the ordinance. And number three, authorize the Department of Public Works to publish a summary of the changes made to the storm water quality ordinance for public review.
Thank you, Mr. Packenjoy. Good morning.
Good morning. Title 13, chapter 13 of our county code is the storm water ordinance. We are, we are supposed to have this storm water ordinance in place as part of the requirements of the state water quality control board's municipal's MS4 requirements. And so every now and then, we get additional requirements from the state. Most of the time, we are okay with our storm water ordinance, but every now and then, we have to update that storm water ordinance to stay in compliance with the requirements from the state. In this case, we have a pyrethroid requirements that we must add. Pyrethroids are pesticides. And as long as we're doing that, we're also doing a little bit of cleanup to the ordinance. The last page here that we have a sheet, it's a small sheet showing what the changes are, most of it, most of the ordinance is, is left untouched. There are a few minor changes to it. Thank you.
Are there any questions for staff? Ben?
Go ahead and proceed with public comment and bring it back to the board if you want.
Okay. Are there any public comments online?
There are no public comments online.
Are there any public comments in the room? Seeing none, bring it back to the board. Are there any board member questions or comments?
Let's see, let me get to the right page. I, I completely hear you on keeping up with the state. Couple small, small, small things. Packet, it would be my packet, page 634. It, it goes here, well, let me start with C. Parties responsible for runoff, in excess of incidental runoff shall implement the following measures. I'll forego one and two, but three, not irrigate during precipitation events. And this is, with C, that's binding as it says, runoff shall implement the following measures. So it's a shall, not a may. So with that, I would, I would suggest in number three, with the exceptions of D, because that's holding you back from the owners of ponds containing recycled water, shall ensure that no discharge occurs unless the discharge is a result of a 25-year, 24-hour storm event or greater, and the appropriate regional water board is notified by email no later than 24 hours after the discharge. So I would say number three should say not irrigate during precipitation events with the exception of D. In the sense that a lot of the, a lot of these owners of ponds containing recycled water do their discharge via recycling. So in the event that a, that a 20, a 100-year, 24, 25-year storm, 24-hour storm event happens, at that point, their, their only possible way of doing it is getting permission through the state water resources control board, the water quality control board to do a discharge so that the dams don't overflow. And we won't want to bind that to not having them be able to irrigate it if, if the state decides that's the appropriate thing to do in, in case of that, those type of emergencies.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
That's, that's, you know, it's a minimal thing, but it kind of seems like C, maybe I'm wrong, Sarah, you know, counsel, but it seems like C's holding you back from doing D. So with the exception of D put in there, you know? I understand why it's in there. We shouldn't be going during a precipitation event unless it's going to make the dam blow out, and then we should darn well get the water out of there before it floods houses.
The way, the way that I read this, Supervisor Stoppa, I, I agree with what you're saying and what Mr. Packenjoy is saying, and I think that D does read as sort of a, an exception to C3.
Okay. Perhaps just a way that we can add something to D that says, to include other measures that need to occur in order for the, the ponds or the dams to, to be safe.
It was kind of a gray area to me. Just for even C3, not irrigate during precipitation's event, except for when applies is in D.
Okay, so the concern is that what's described in D, which is permissible, if you follow those steps, could be read, could be interpreted as irrigation and therefore... So maybe, Mr. Packenjoy, what we could do is say something, is start D off by saying something like, notwithstanding C3, comma, owners of ponds containing, can go, can do.
That works for me also.
Okay.
Just don't want to have us conflicting with ourselves throughout.
Sure.
That's lawyer talk.
Right.
It is. I apologize for the notwithstanding.
You know, that's why she's the educated one over there, I'm just bringing up a point. Um, let's see, page 630. 30.01.020 Administrative Authority. A, this chapter of Calaveras County Code shall be enforced by the Director of the Calaveras County Department of Public Works or his/her designee. The Director may delegate his or her responsibilities to enforce this chapter to a code enforcement officer or other designee either individually or collectively. My thing with this is there's consistently a lot, a lot of things in here, the Director shall determine, you know, so there's certain amount of authority with that. And a lot of times when we're going through projects and, and everything moving forward, whether it be a public entity or a developer, there, there are issues that are addressed moving forward through the engineering of the company. So at this point, is there discretion here at the point where, well, my concern is, you know, if, if you were to pass this off to another person who isn't necessarily an engineer, and the engineer has provided a mitigatable circumstance to a event, how do we go through that process, Robert? I mean, I, I would prefer this be delegated to someone with an engineering degree and everything so that, you know, that they could go through everything and they have the education on how it applies within state law and be able to make a discretionary call on certain mitigatable circumstances.
Right. The routine of how we handle that type of situation is, if I'm not checking it myself, we have consultants on board that are engineers that would check it, check the hydrology, hydraulics, studies that go with these projects to make sure that they are, that they work. So if there is an issue with those, there is an engineer in the background that is checking that. The inspector is communicating most likely what's going on with the client, with the, with the developer. He'll do the communication, but the actual work when it comes to engineering checking comes either to a, an engineer that's consulting or myself.
And I think what this subsection does, Supervisor Stoppa, is would allow that if there were an issue, if, you know, Robert or the consultant determined that there were an issue, it preserves the county's ability to have code enforcement, say, write a citation if that were necessary.
Right. In this, in this, it would be your in-house inspector as opposed to code enforcement.
It, there is, within the chapter, an escalating feature so that we start with our inspector. If our inspector can't get compliance, it moves on to code enforcement.
Okay, thank you. I'm fine with that. Just the, just the one, I only have the one recommendation on change. I don't really see much problems with anything else in here personally.
Any other board questions or comments? Not seen. Okay. One more time for public comment. Is there any, do you have public comment?
There is no public comment.
Okay. Any in the room? Seeing none? Okay. If there's no more board or staff comments, is there a motion to approve the recommendation by staff with the minor edit that Supervisor Stoppa commented on?
What she said.
Just, just so it's clear for the record then, I think the, the recommended edit to what's been presented would be that section 13.01.060D began by stating, notwithstanding C3, comma, owners of ponds containing, and then would just go on as dropped.
Minor. I don't know if I did anything there, but, you know, thank you.
I think you can add clarity.
Well, that's your motion.
That's my motion.
Okay, we got a second by, by Chair. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Bye-bye. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Next, we have agenda item number 24. If the clerk could please read out.
Item number 24 is informational item department from the Agriculture Department. Receive a presentation on Calaveras County's 2021 agricultural crop and livestock report.
We actually have a PowerPoint, so we could take a minute.
Yes, come on in.
Come on in for a spell.
She's, she'll be working.
Madam Clerk, do we want to take it just a couple minutes or...
Yes.
Okay. Madam Chair, I think maybe we should take a brief break so that staff can set up their presentation.
It'll take longer. Okay, we'll take a five-minute break. Thank you.
Five-minute break.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you and welcome back. We, I'll turn it over to Jesse Fowler for presentation.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Honorable Members of the Board. Jesse Fowler, Agricultural Commissioner and Director of Waits and Measures. I've brought with me Pauline Montemeyer. She actually compiled and designed the crop report as well as presentation, so if you guys have any in-depth questions, I brought her just in case, plus she's my unofficial IT. All right, so let me go ahead and get this guy started. In accordance with section 2279 of the California Food and Agricultural Code, I respectfully submit the 2021 Calaveras County Crop Report. The gross crop value for the county of Calaveras was $18,648,864, representing a 14.4% decrease from 2020 values. This year, livestock held the top two positions for the highest grossing commodities. Cattle was in the leading commodity in Calaveras County with a number of $7,988,500 and a 4.3% value increase from 2020. Poultry dethroned last year's timber as the second highest grossing commodity. Poultry, valued at $2,788,310, had a 3.1% increase in value compared to last year, whereas timber had a 41% decrease with its value of $2,345,349. For livestock values overall, this year saw a 4.6% increase from 2020. In recent years, the ongoing drought and increased wildfires have become a consistent plague to California in which Calaveras is no exception. Combined with the shortage of farm labor contractor labor, it's unsurprising that the resulting impacts were felt in the agricultural operations across the county. Various crops decreased in both supply and value throughout 2021 with values decreasing between 22 and 49%. In 2021, wine grapes had a 40.9% decrease in value from 2020. The effects of wildfire smoke created significant issues for the winemaking industry in the form of smoke taint, a change to grape characteristics that give affected wine an undesirable smoky taste. Because of this, some wine grapes were not harvested due to the risk of smoke taint. In other instances, wines made with smoke tainted grapes were inevitably disposed of. Monetary values in this report are based on freight onboard prices at shipping and do not reflect the net returns or profits made by growers. We are grateful for the ongoing work by the agricultural industry in providing food to our communities and recognize its perseverance throughout this ever-changing landscape. I wish to express my gratitude to those who provided the necessary information and data used in this crop report. I also want to thank my staff for their hard work in making this report possible. So I'm going to go through and just kind of go over some of the highlights, just to give you an overall, and then if you guys have any questions. So this is just a little bit more in depth on the top three commodities seen in 2021. So number one was cattle. In this one, it went from $20,656,000 to, sorry, $20,656,000 to $7,988,500, so very small decrease, or excuse me, increase. And that increase was actually because even though we had ongoing drought issues, there were a lot more cattle actually sold, so that's what actually bumped it up, the 4.3%. Even though that we did have some lower prices for cattle, but again, there's just so many people selling because they didn't have the pasture land and rangeland for cattle. So that takes us over to poultry. So poultry actually, for the first time, has overtaken other commodities, become the second highest value crop for 2021. And that's because there were more birds sold and more value per bird, which pushed up the overall price, so just supply and demand pushed that up. So timber, yeah, timber had a huge decrease in value, which again, isn't really surprising because there were so many fires in the area. So because of this, in 2021, the efforts were concentrated in other counties where there were actual fire burn scars, so they could attempt to salvage those burned logs and get them to market. So there was very little timber that was actually harvested in Calaveras. So livestock, just to kind of cover some other livestock, it was a note that the price of sheep and lambs actually climbed 63%. The market was simply demanding more product when less was available, therefore, again, supply and demand, the, the cost went up. And the same was actually found for livestock products like wool and mohair. So fruit and nut crops. Walnuts actually saw a significant, and price and harvest decrease. So walnuts have been having some troubles lately in that there has been increasing competition from other markets like Chile, and they've been able to produce cheaper walnuts. Plus, 2021 saw some difficulties with container shipments, so again, all those backups at the ports actually really affected walnuts and almonds, so that was another reason, besides also, again, drought really, it, it impacts everything, just no water, nothing grows. So olives, however, conversely, they actually saw a large increase in yield and therefore overall value because it's alternating crops, so one year will be up, one will be down. So this was, 2020 was actually an up year, quite a bit up. You can see it's 133% up, which is great. And then, moving back to wine grapes, so as I mentioned in that opening letter, it was a really poor year for wine grapes. A lot of that fruit remained on the vine just because there was so much smoke in the area in 2021. And to kind of compound that, so farm labor, it was really, really difficult to come by and very expensive when you could find it. So that led to a lot of growers just deciding to forego that year's crop and leave it on the vine because it's not something, it's easy as, oh, okay, while this is smoke tainted or not, it's actually not seen until later in the fermentation process. So again, a lot of money has to go into it, which is why they decided just to forego the crop this year. All right. So some other commodities, apiary, so again, drought is what's severely affecting the, the price here, so it actually came down 43.9% from last year. There are a lot of pollination contracts were also not available again because there weren't as many blooms. Nursery, so we had two local nurseries closed, so that impacted the numbers substantially and kind of more of just a periphery thing, a lot more workers going back to in-office work, so there weren't as many people buying plants to beautify their homes, both inside and out, so that had an impact, albeit a small one. And then field crops, obviously, less water meant less crop, so that was down as well. So cannabis, so cannabis is actually not recognized as a food commodity on the federal level, but I did add this in here just to kind of give a snapshot of what's going on as a supplement to the crop report. And with licensing right there, you'll see that there are six commercial and 58 cultivation licenses. Obviously, that doesn't capture all the licenses that are held. That's actually capturing what was actually used in 2021 to either produce or sell a crop. And these numbers were actually found using our internal track-it and CalAg permits licensing programs, and what that resulted in is the production. So value this year was a combination, the numbers, they came from, again, track-it, CalAg permits, California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, which is a sort of spin-off of Board of Equalization. And from that, we're, we're able, and surveys as well, and from that, we're able to extrapolate production numbers for our county. So we had 102.2 acres in production, and it was estimated there were 50,131 pounds of flour and trim produced, which gave us a value of $10,989,353. As far as trends, so this is, since this is our first year reporting this, at least in several years, I, we really didn't have a lot of numbers to compare to, obviously, but there were a few growers who in their survey did say that they had some weather issues and that decreased their numbers. So I'm, I'm guessing we may see better numbers next year, but again, who knows, we might have worse drought, so. Next, I'm going to go into our department summaries, so this is just giving overview of what our department accomplished in 2021, since Ag Department actually has several programs and the Waits and Measures side as well, and a lot of people don't actually know everything that we do and how we can serve them as a community. So pest exclusion, we did 41 nursery stock and shipments, inspected them, and those came from glasswing sharpshooter-infested areas. So glasswing sharpshooter is a pest that could be devastating to the wine grape industry, and it is also something that could affect just our regular residents as well, as they also like a lot of landscaping materials, and they can infect it with a disease that would cause decline of that plant. We inspected eight, or excuse me, 282 parcels, and that is anything coming across our border, making sure that there aren't any pests on there, that again, could impact our commerce here, our agriculture here, making sure there's a certain level of cleanliness and certification there as, as needed for the material. Pest detection, we placed 613 insect traps, and that's for nine particular insects that we don't have in this county, to make sure that we continue not to have them in this county, because again, they can be very detrimental. And we serviced those traps 2,910 times. So direct marketing, we issued three certified farmer's market certificates and 45, excuse me, 44 certified producer certificates, and just to make sure that the produce that you're buying as grown in Calaveras actually is. On the Waits and Measures side, we did 968 inspections on various weighing and measuring devices, so broken down, that is 272 weighing devices, which is generally scales, and 696 measuring devices, which would be like gas pumps or sub-meters. Of that, we did 26 follow-up inspections, meaning that we found that there was something out of tolerance, so we went back and made sure that it was all right, so that both the consumer and the business were getting their fair market value for that product. All right, it's the red screen, which means I'm at the end of my presentation. So again, I'd just like to thank the growers and ranchers who responded to our survey and to also thank my staff again, especially Pauline here, for compiling data and designing the 2021 crop report. And the, both the crop report and that cannabis survey results, we're going to post them to our website later today, so if anybody's interested, they can just go to the Ag Department's website and get a copy. Otherwise, any, any questions?
Are there any questions from the board? Supervisor Kyler?
I have several.
Okay.
Could you please explain again how you come up with these figures? Do you depend on the ranchers or farmers giving it to you or...
Right.
What's that, how you get that value?
So both, both the crop report and the cannabis survey...
if anybody is thinking of applying any sort of pesticides or as a part of the licensing for cannabis, they have to get an operator identification number through our county. So through that, we actually get the information on acreage, so we know for sure, like for the wine grape survey, that is what our acreage is because that's what people have actually come in and told us when they got their permit beyond the, the actual survey. And then on, Pauline, also, we go off of some historic practices like going to the Board of Equalization to find like timber values, some of these sort of periphery or some of those cannabis numbers, so we basically take from a lot of different sources. Our number one fallback is always going to be those surveys, which is why we're so thankful when people turn them in, and again, reiterating, those are not part of the public records. You cannot do a public records request on those surveys, even in office, we can't share those actual individual surveys with other offices, so if, if anyone listening, your, your information is very confidential, so please turn it in, we really appreciate it, but hopefully that gives you an idea, we just, of all the different sources we put together to try to get a big picture.
Okay. On timber, is that just private or private, federal and state?
So those numbers are, we send out to everyone that we have contact information on that would be private, but as far as the, it would be a lot of federal because it is actual timber, like board feet that we're pulling when people get permits to actually harvest, so that's generally where that information comes from. And then, did you happen to speak with anyone or did you just go to the board? So we spoke to Sierra Pacific Industries as well, and they gave us a general trend of what's going on as far as timber harvest goes. So it was SPI and we also went through CDTFA, the California Department of Tax. Yeah, the Fee and. Administration. I had to write it down for a reason. It's basically BOE, the Board of Equalization, but that's their.
But if it comes off of federal land or state land, they don't go through the Board of Equalization, do they, or is it if, I don't want to make up, ten are logging, has a contract to take timber off of federal land, do, then they go through, they pay into the Board of Equalization?
They should, because they should be paying a tax on whatever materials they're harvesting.
Okay, so that's included.
Yes.
But, I mean, I guess what I'm really looking at is the timber report reflects federal, state and private timber lands.
Yeah, we're doing the best we can to capture all agriculture in the county, and again, it's, from what sources we have, obviously, you know, it's, it's, it's a, an extrapolation, so it's a best guess.
And on your measuring devices, that also includes grocery stores?
Yes, so anything that is commercially used to weigh or measure, so whether it's, you know, a, a deli scale or when you're checking out, the scale they weigh your produce on, all of that gets checked on an annual basis by our staff to make sure that it's accurate.
Great, thank you.
Yeah?
Thank you.
Oh, and I should, and also prices, I should mention that, so we're also, we take all the complaints, we have to do investigations, so if you're ever in a grocery store and the prices aren't as advertised, or any store for that matter, that there's actually a truth in advertising code section that they have to, they have to sell at what they actually advertise it for.
Good.
Thank you. Under your pest detection, did we find any new pests in the county that normally aren't here?
No, thank goodness.
No?
No, I, so we did a trap.
That's good.
For a new pest that they've been finding in Southern California, it's called invasive shot hole borer, but we did not find any.
Good.
Jack?
Thank you. We don't get to see you often, so I'll just ask a question that's not directly related to your report. What can we as a Board of Supervisors be doing to further this industry in our county? What advice would you like to see on a policy level?
Oh goodness, that's a, that's a big question. I probably have to think about that a little bit more. I know that you guys are very supportive of our agricultural industry, which is great, that's the biggest step right there. Yeah, that's actually something I think I would, I would have to reach out to like Farm Bureau and like Cattlemen's and, and ask them what, I mean, I again, I'm always happy to offer whatever services I can, but yeah, I, I would definitely want to ask them, and I could get back to you on that.
Sometimes there's just things lumbering the road that we're not recognizing.
Right.
Perhaps you are working in this could give us advice on.
Yeah, absolutely.
Ben?
Possibly bring more processing into the county as opposed to shipping out our stuff to be processed would help the agriculture industry?
Yeah, I know, especially with livestock, that would probably be good. I know they are working towards some of that smaller, but that's more of.
Thought I would throw that out there.
State, federal, yeah, okay.
Melita?
Looking for the red lights.
Do you think cannabis should be an ag product in Calaveras County?
Oh, wow, put me on the, well, cannabis is interesting because mattering on how you view it, it could be agriculture or it could not be agriculture. I, it's definitely been embraced like an agricultural product in this county, and we enforce it like an agricultural product in this county, so at this point, seems to me it's an agricultural product in this county.
So, not that I disagree, but in prior conversations I've had with Supervisor Geramendi is.
Communities?
Yeah.
She puts me in the hot seat.
That's what you get because you sit next to me. At some point, not today, but I think we as a board have not said it's an ag product, even though it's somewhat treated like one. I think it would be good to see what are the pros and cons of the board specifically saying it's an ag product.
Right.
I mean, I know grading is an issue, but there, there could be other advantages and disadvantages. Sarah's going, I wish she'd get off this topic, but I'm just, thought I'd ask the question.
Well, it is recognized at a state level as agricultural products. Federal's moving towards that, again, that's, but it's up to you guys, like for, in particular, the Williams Snack, it's up to you guys if you would like to view it as an ag product or not. It's completely your discretion.
That's another subject for another day. I was just curious since you're here, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Jesse, for the presentation, both of you, both the work that you guys have done on this. So if there's not any other comments by the board, seeing none, I think we're good, unless you guys have any other comments, any cut you off or anything? Okay.
I would like to say our ag commissioner is that many of the public events regarding agriculture, and it's always a pleasure to see you at them. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. It's nice to be there.
Okay, with that, then we're going to move on to Supervisor Announcements. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Is there any public comment? I'll start with Jim.
Yeah, there is no public comment.
Okay, and there's none, seeing none in the room, I still need to do it next. I'll move it back to, yeah, I apologize, there is one public comment on here, okay. Um, pre, there's three minutes for a public comment, and the clerk will stop you when your time's up. Ms. Smith, you should be able to talk now.
Hi, good afternoon, almost, almost good afternoon. I'm super excited to see cannabis presented today with the ag report. I know that it's a very interesting topic, and some counties are grabholding, grabbing the hold of it and sharing this information when they do the ag report, so, and some are, I'm really glad to see us doing that. And the commissioner, Beaton, too, we are considered an ag product at the state level, and I will always advocate for that to be taken up at the local level as well. We do still fight for that ag commodity designation, but we are an actual ag product at the state level, and just really appreciate being included today and sharing this information with the public. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other public comment?
There is no other public comment.
And not seeing any in the room, we'll move on to Supervisor Announcements, and I'll start with Supervisor Stoppa.
We, we have some good meetings coming up later this week. I probably won't be able to make my CSEDD meeting on Wednesday, precluding, I have other meetings starting in the morning and then moving on to hardwood advisory committee meeting. Hopefully, we can wrap some stuff up and pass it on to the planning commission when it comes to our oak woodlands. Look forward to that on Thursday, and we've got a lot more coming, but I can announce that next Tuesday.
Right, Chair. Anything?
I have nothing to report, Madam Chair, thank you.
Supervisor, any?
Nothing required to report, Chair.
Supervisor Kyler?
Nothing to report.
The only thing I have to report where I attended the East Bay Med were my fellow supervisors that were there, and that was a great event, so, thank you. It's good to see everybody's faces again. And with that, the board will be convening into closed session, and we will report out at the next board reading. Thank you.